Okay, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You definitely made the pledge. We note that Councilor Lorenzo, Councilor Washington, and Councilor Warhouse are asking our partners to be joining us by phone.
Oh, I'm sorry. For those who have just come in, if you would like to speak during comments, please make sure that you're signed up on the sheet with the clerk of the council. At this time, we're going to have a presentation by Pastor Shawn from First Congregational along with the members of the Backpack Program.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council folks, and to the new town manager. It's a pleasure to have you here and to everybody who's out here today. Just really grateful that people come out and engage in the community and give us the opportunity to talk about important things. I'm the pastor of Bloomfield Congregational Church, also known as First Congregational Church, just across the street here, and I am here along with our two partners from First Cathedral and Rehoboth Church of God to talk to you about a first-of-its-kind partnership, something we're calling the Power of Partnership, and also in partnership with the town of Bloomfield. There's been what's called a Backpack Program, which serves underprivileged youth, particularly in the elementary schools. Some people who've been teachers in difficult towns and difficult areas can tell you that the child's behavior is often very different on Monday than it is Tuesday through Friday. And why is that? Because on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they're getting good meals from the school, but on the weekend, as difficult as it is for us to admit, over the weekend, some of these children get incredibly malnourished or no food at all. This is where the roller bag, or we call the Backpack Program, comes in, where we get as many of these roller bags as we can. This one's going to be a little heavier for me to pick up because this one's actually filled with food, about like this, and we deliver as many of these roller bags filled with 15 pounds of food to be able to help a family, not just feed that child, but to help that whole family have more food throughout that weekend. Now, this is a very involved process. It involves social workers, it involves teachers, it involves so many people in the town, including people here sitting at this table who have been incredibly supportive of this program. In the past, there was another group that did this, but after doing it for a long time, finally decided to pursue other interests and the program was going to drop. A number of us got together and said, "We can't let this program drop," but we realized it was too big for any one of us individually to take on because we want to grow it and to really help the youth of this town. And so I called the mayor one day and said, "We're thinking about doing this, but help." And she said, "I got this." Let me think about what we can do. And she brought together, for a first-of-its-kind partnership, Bloomfield Congregational Church, First Cathedral, and Rehoboth Church of God to do something together that none of us could do on our own. Now, we are restarting this program from scratch, and currently, we are serving 24 youth from one of the elementary schools, but we expect that to be at about 100 in about three weeks. And after we do that, our aspiration then is to recognize that, you know what? It doesn't start in elementary school. You know, we run a Child Development Center at Bloomfield Congregational Church. First Cathedral does. Rehoboth is seriously involved in the youth in this town. Why should that not be extended to the people who are younger than going into elementary school? So the aspirations for what we're doing here are significant, but to be able to pull off a project like this is involved. And so we want people in the town to know about it. We want you as citizen leaders who are here today, you as elected leaders, to know about this today because we need your help. We need volunteer help. We need roller bags, right? I didn't think I was going to be able to do that with one arm. Workouts are working out. But we need your help. We need roller bags. They're not cheap to collect and they wear out somewhat easily. Basically, anything that you would, you know, use if you happen to bring your work in a roller bag because you don't want to carry your work, or if you go on an airplane, the kind of thing that you would bring on as a carry-on and put above, that's the kind of thing we need. And then we're going to need food, a lot of it. We were just approved last week by Food Share as a fully qualified partner with Food Share. That is not an easy process to go through. It is one that we are grateful that we were able to be approved for, and we could not have done that without them knowing we had the support of the town and that we had the support of this powerful partnership. We would not have been able to do that alone as our church alone. And I think this is just the beginning of what partnership among faith communities can be. I think as much as we have done for our own faith communities, as much as we have reached out to others, sometimes the power of that is in the magnification that comes when you work together. And there's a certain degree that we can do on our own, but when we start doing that together, two things happen. One, we get to know each other better and we get to know what we don't know that they know, and they get to know what they don't know that we know. And that may be confusing language, but it's true. And sometimes reality is confusing, but when you get together and you talk about it and you work on it together, amazing things can happen. And I know this is a civic organization, but I'm going to speak a little spiritual language because I'm here as the pastor today. And the funny thing is with the Holy Spirit, that when you start to do the things that make the world a better place, things start to just fall into place. Things start to happen. Things start to magnify. They don't just add in little pieces. They start to magnify. And when you do partnerships like this, the impact on the world can magnify. And so our commitment, beyond just this program, which we do need your help with, and more information will come out in written form and electronic form, but we need your help to support us in this idea that as we engage together as religious communities and the civic community, that we're not out there to convert you, but we want to make this world a better place because that's what we are called to do. So whether it is this, what we call the Backpack Program and the Roller Bag Program for the elementary schools that we hope to expand, or it is something else, if there's a way that you need something done in this community, if there's a way that we can help, not just as individual churches, but as partnering with the town or partnering with something that you're doing here in the town, if we want to do that, not just as our individual churches, but as the new power of this partnership. So thank you for your time.
Question.
Pastor Shawn? I've got a question, if you don't mind. I thought I was going to escape. Sometimes when you just say you're going to go, like you get out of the question and answer part.
Just a little clarification. You said the backpack, because I know currently there was a backpack program at Laurel where a lot of the kids get to go home, you know, on Fridays with one of the same bags you have there packed.
That's it.
Is that the same? Okay. So this is not, it's not a new program. You guys are just taking that and running with it.
Correct. So it was going to, it was going to close down. It's restarting up, and then it's going to be, that's the exact same program. It's not a redundant program. Correct.
My second thing is, you guys collaborating with the schools, I presume?
That's the only way that you can get this done. So we are collaborating individually with certain administrators, teachers who work with the students, with the social workers there who know the needs of the students. So what we've done is, we don't go directly into the schools. We go in and talk to the leaders of the schools, and then we provide them with the information, and the information is given to the parents. And the parents opt in or opt out of the program. We don't make someone take anything. And that's part of the challenge, actually, in, that happens in these situations. There are people who qualify for these programs who choose not to take them because of pride and actually probably more specifically because of shame. And there are other areas that I know this town is working on in partnership with other groups outside, whether it's the United Way or other programs to try to address this situation, but we try to find ways, working with the schools, to reduce the stigma that comes with taking help. And that's one of the, that's one of the ways that we work with the schools, to find those people and then say, "Okay, what is there a way that we can help reduce that stigma? Is it a different kind of bag? Is it a different way of delivery? Is there a way maybe that we can find another way to get it to them if they don't want their child carrying, you know, that bag? Well, we're going to find different ways to get that done."
So if someone is watching from home and would like to get in touch with you to make a donation or contribution towards your cause, how could they reach you?
So they can do that by contacting either First Congregational Church in Bloomfield, otherwise known as Bloomfield Congregational Church. Our number is 860-242-0776. That's 860-242-0776. Or you can reach out to Rehoboth Church of God. I don't know that phone number off the top of my head. If someone here does and you want to give that number right here, let's do that.
That number is 860-242-8335.
And then for First Cathedral?
I don't have the number, so sorry. But most folks do use the internet, so you can go to thefirstcathedral.org. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So here's another shameless plug. I know on Sunday, there will be a blessing of the backpacks at the First Congregational Church, so if you do have backpacks that you would like to donate, I will be donating a couple and being at the service on Sunday, so you can bring them to First Congregational so that those backpacks can be blessed. The only thing you have to do is provide the backpacks. They'll provide the food and the packing.
Absolutely.
I'd like to personally thank First Congregational, First Cathedral, and Rehoboth Church of God for this wonderful partnership, and I'm expecting great things.
We are as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Can we ask the clerk of the court to close the door because there's noise coming in from the outside?
I'll get it.
Yeah, thank.
Yeah, clerk of the court. At this time, I have citations for the men's and women's golf club at the Wintonbury Hills Golf Course. Town of Bloomfield, Connecticut citation is hereby given to Mr. Don Tinker or his designate. Okay? As president of the men's club, your dedication to the promotion of Wintonbury Hills Golf Course is a true testament to your love of the game. Since the creation of the men's golf club in 2004, we have seen a visible increase in enrollment and playtime for people of all ages and abilities. As Ben Hogan once said, "I never played around when I didn't learn something new about the game." We applaud your efforts as a loyal supporter of the course to encourage new members to learn and grow in their love of golf and take full advantage of the facilities, including enjoyment of the onsite pub. Hmm. Through organized competitions, both fans and players alike have come to appreciate the beauty and the technical aspects and benefits of a Billy Casper golf course like Wintonbury Hills, especially our deputy mayor. And now, I, Suzette DeBeetham Brown, mayor of the town of Bloomfield, along with the members of the Bloomfield Town Council, town staff, members of the Wintonbury Hills, and our beloved residents, offer you a heartfelt gratitude for your tireless efforts in promoting the Wintonbury Hills Golf Course. Thank you. So can I just say something? So I have no golf skills whatsoever. I'm okay with that, though. Thanks, Deputy Mayor. However, I was able to hit the first tee, right, this golf season, and when I say I didn't need anybody else but Rose Marie on my side, she made me feel like I was Tiger Woods. I didn't hit the ball into the woods, so I guess that was a good thing, right? Okay. As president of the women's club, your dedication to the promotion of Wintonbury Hills Golf Course is a true testimony, testament to your love of the game. Since the creation of the women's club seven years ago...
Wow, we just created the women's club?
Okay, all right. Because the men's have had their club for a while. We have seen a visible increase in enrollment and playtime for people of all ages and abilities. As Ben Hogan once said, "I never played around, I never played around when I didn't learn something new about the game." We applaud your efforts as a loyal supporter of the course to encourage new members to learn and grow in their love of golf and take full advantage of the facilities...
The onsite pub, too?
Through organized competition, both fans and players alike have come to appreciate the beauty and technical aspects and benefits of a Billy Casper golf course like Wintonbury Hills. And now, I, Suzette DeBeetham Brown, mayor of the town of Bloomfield, along with the members of the Bloomfield Town Council, town staff, members of Wintonbury Hills and our beloved residents, offer you a heartfelt gratitude for your tireless efforts in promoting the Wintonbury Hills Golf Course. And I will be back next year.
Here's a great opportunity to just briefly tell us if you want to become a member of either the men's club or the women's club. I think it's a great opportunity if you, yeah.
I know Don Tinker couldn't be here tonight because he's on the road back from a golf tournament, and I was going to say a couple of words about the men's group, but our ladies' golf league is really starting to grow.
The mic, the mic.
We had a huge increase in our membership this year. We now have 41 women playing on Thursday nights. They don't play every Thursday night, but we have a very good group. And with the help of Kevin... Kevin, stand up and please. We just like to thank you because you are our glue that keeps the whole thing together for us every single week, and it's just a wonderful place to play. So if you're not a golfer, see Karen, see Kevin for a lesson, and I can tell you, there's somebody here who's going to be a golfer. So I just want to thank everybody here and all the support we get from Wintonbury Hills.
Just a little history on our men's club. It was started by Mark Jacobs, who is a Bloomfield resident and Bloomfield business owner. Yes, that's true. Yes. And now Don Tinker is our president, and under his leadership, we've grown considerably. There's a lot more participation. And also this weekend, we're having our Charity Ryder Cup, which benefits the Bloomfield Food Bank. And last year, our second year, we almost tripled our donation from the first year. So this year, we're hoping to do even more, and it's all under Don's leadership. And I'm sorry he couldn't be here tonight, but he's stuck, so, but thank you for the award. I know he appreciates it.
Okay, ladies, we have to join the golf club. Right, Sharon? She's like, "I don't think so." Okay, at this time, we're going to have a presentation by Ms. Cindy White on Youth Financial Literacy Family Mint Program.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor and the whole town council, everyone for coming out this evening. I'm a little nervous, so just bear with me. I work for United Credit Education Services, but that's not why I am here. I'm here tonight just to talk to you about a part of our company that is dear to my heart. That's our 501(c)(3), and that's where we basically give back. And what we do is we give scholarships from, actually scholarships applications go out October 21st. That's when first-year college seniors and high school, they can, they can apply for these scholarships online. Last year, we gave away $385,000 in scholarships. This year, for 2020, we are giving away $400,000 in scholarships. And what bothers me is every year, they name, all the names of the people that have gotten scholarships. Connecticut is very small, and I am in Bloomfield, so this year, I said, "No, we will get this scholarship money." We have kids here that are going to college and they need these funds. Our company also goes a little bit further. We also educate kids from the ages of eight to 18 on the importance of having financial literacy. We, I don't know about you guys, but when I was in, I was in school, I wasn't taught about credit. I wasn't taught about, you know, banking, saving, starting our own business. Well, our company actually sends workbooks to the schools. It's an eight-week course, and the teacher actually teaches it. Every child that up here completes it, gets a certificate. We give them a big pizza party, and for every 35 kids, we donate $500. I have done this in Texas, Georgia, South Carolina. Why can't I do this in Bloomfield, where I graduated from? So I had a conversation with the mayor, and I told her about this awesome program that I felt that, you know, Bloomfield needed to take advantage of, especially because I'm right here, and why am I helping all these other schools and not right here? That's it.
So I think one of the things that I would like, I know that Councilor has a question. One of the things that I would like to do is probably maybe at the next admin education to go through exactly what the program is in detail. And I know that some of the programs that we've been doing, and I think I had asked you about it, we kind of partner with Leisure Services.
Yes.
And I wanted to know if we partnered with those students at Leisure Services, would that $500 be available to Leisure Services as well?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we just need to be able to look into this a little bit more to see which is the best avenue for this to go through, and I'm hoping that we could probably get it on the agenda for admin and education. Councilor Mann?
Ms. White, hi. I think this is a great topic. Financial literacy is the most important thing. We live in a capitalist society, but no one teaches our kids anything about money.
Exactly.
And it's more than just credit. Credit's a losing game. Investment is the game you want to teach. So my question to you is, and I think this should be a regular part of the school curriculum. I don't know that that's your interest or whether or not this is convertible to that type of thing, but to the extent that we can look at this as an expansive idea, I mean, you got to start someplace.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your coming before us, but we've not been able to make headway you right in the schools.
Yeah.
Teaching is a very, very important topic.
Very.
So I thank you, and I look forward to further conversations.
All right, great.
Yeah, just two things. You mentioned when you start talking originally about the funds that your company provides for scholarships, which is great. Then you said, obviously, what your interest is making sure some of those scholarships go to folks in Connecticut.
Yes.
Currently, this program is in how many states?
All 50 states.
All 50 states. Okay. So when you do, when you do those scholarships each year, it's, people are eligible from all 50 states?
Exactly.
And at this point, we've had no winners in Connecticut?
No. I mean, we had a couple, but no one has actually gotten a college scholarship.
Okay, good.
So, you know, that kind of...
So I'm glad you've noticed that.
Yes.
Want to move on with that. I guess my second is following up on Councilor Mann, and I think what the mayor was saying. It sounds like this is a classroom program for the schools. Have you talked to the schools about this?
No.
Okay.
No, I just, you know, talked to her about it. It just, you know, every year, I do post it on Facebook, and I try to get the up here word out, "Hey, October 21st, there's scholarship money out there." All they have to do is just insert a couple of questions, do an essay, and the top people are, you know, picked. The upper highest winner last year was $25,000, and then it's $10,000 and $5,000 and $1,000. I mean, something, $1,000 to a child going to colleges.
Is real money, yeah.
Exactly.
So, no, but that's the scholarship part. I'm talking about the, what, eight-week financial literacy program?
Yeah.
Have you spoken to anyone in the school system?
No, not yet.
Okay. And that's on your...
I thought it was best to, you know, come to you first because I don't know the steps.
Oh, yeah, no, this is first step.
Yes.
But that is, I mean, I think that potentially, you may want to make this presentation to the Board of Education to, I mean, just as, you know, and get it in the pipeline for both.
Okay.
I agree with the mayor. I think we have a great, you know, we're doing a number of great programs through Leisure Services, but I also agree with Councilor Mann that this is the kind of thing that should be in the classroom.
Great.
And so, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I love this program. I also think that it could be in both places, both Leisure Service and in the schools because we have young adults and so on, even adults in our community per se that could utilize this program. My question for you, in the states that you're actually running this program, is it actually in the schools?
Yes.
It's in the schools?
Yep.
And how were you able to build that collaboration with the school? What's the process in engaging?
Well, how it works, once a school is actually interested, there is a checklist I have to fill out. I need the up here number of kids, when is it you want it to start, when it ends, and then we order the up here booklets. They are shipped directly to the school. Usually, I, I'm there opening day, and then I don't, you know, participate anymore until party time. I need a list of everyone's, all the kids' names so that they can get their certificates, and that list gets turned in to the company, and the company then cuts the check. Councilor?
Yeah, just one quick follow-up. So it sounds like you have done this in other school systems. Can you just tell us which other school systems?
Yes, well, I don't know them off the top. One was a charter school in Texas. And then I did it at my niece's school in Lawrenceville, Georgia, and I also did it in Windsboro, South Carolina.
Madam, you haven't done it anywhere in Connecticut?
No. No, I actually had an appointment to do it at High School, Inc., and the principal left and went to Windsor High, so I never got in contact with the new principal.
Yeah, you really need to talk to the Board of Education, yeah?
Yeah.
So I would suggest that we take it up in admin education, and we could work towards Leisure Service and probably build the connections with the schools.
Thank you so very much. Yep. Any citizen statements?
Yes. Sequoy Patterson?
Please be mindful that there's a three-minute time limit on each statement, and your time will start once you start speaking. Please provide your name and address.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Town Council, residents of Bloomfield. My name is Sequoy Patterson. I am a 2021 MSW candidate at the UConn School of Social Work, and my concentration is community organizing, and I am a resident of Bloomfield at Wedgewood Apartments. Okay. According to the Center, sorry, I'm a little nervous, but according to the Center for Disease Control, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among Americans ages 15 to 24, yet it remains an underfunded and under-discussed public health issue. One in four young adults has a diagnosable mental health disorder, yet most at risk are not reaching out and receiving the help they need. Research shows that students from underserved backgrounds are at higher risk for mental health concerns and suicidal ideation. These students are also far less likely to have access to mental health services. After learning of these alarming statistics, I've visited my former middle school, Carmanay Race, in hopes of implementing programs that will benefit the well-being of the student body. Sadly, not only is there an absence of mental health education, but I learned that the mental hea, I'm sorry, that I learned that the health curriculum was removed from seventh and eighth grade altogether. When I inquired about this change, I was told that the class was cut due to other budget priorities. Then I asked, "Were there any parents upset behind this?" And by their answer, I can assume that they... And by their answer, I can assume that there had been no form of notice from the school of the curriculum change. This scared me. As a pre-teen and teenager, this is the time where body confidence is most important. With puberty, hormones, nutrition, menstrual cycles, predisposal, predisposal to genetic diseases and other biological development, health is needed. As far as mental and emotional health, with increasing number of school shootings and violence in our country, the growing climate crisis and environmental issues questioning the existence of our earth, the addictive nature and anxiety-driven culture of social media, persistent bullying and much, much more, I cannot begin to understand how our children manage all these things in a healthy manner. To conclude, I would like to say as outsiders of this community, we have to do better. When making decisions about the budget, we must first ask ourselves, can we afford to jeopardize our future and how much is life worth? And, um, I understand that this is surrounded around education and the Board of Education will probably be the core of this. Um, but I also bring this to your attention because I know that the Town Council gives the platform for citizens to speak. I'm not sure if the Board of Education allows that same opportunity. And, um, I came to a few meetings over the summer and I know that there was, um, back and forth as far as like the Board of Education asking for an increase in the budget. So I don't know if there's like a check and balances as far as like accountability, as far as what gets cut from the budget or what falls, um, behind when that budget or goal is not met. That was all, unless you have questions for me. Thank you.
Yeah, it's fascinating. Actually, it's not something we really thought about, I think, and not much of a community discussion. And, and I'm wondering, uh, why not? But, um, uh, the thing you mentioned about the health education disappearing is not a good sign. But the other question I had was, do you, is there any indication that incidents have occurred that need the kind of, uh, attention that you're talking about? I have no idea. I'm just wondering where, where is this coming from?
Um, so I intern as, um, the Development Associate, Associate at the, um, Jordi Porco Foundation. And we're a nonprofit organization that focuses on creating a message of hope for young adults as well as preventing suicide and, uh, promoting mental health and kind of getting rid of the stigma. And so once I started to learn about the programs and services that they provide and wanted to share them with Carmanet Race, but I got discouraged because I'm like, before I can even implement the mental health aspect, there's no health at all here. And, um, as a former student there, um, my year at eighth grade, I was just coming, transferring from New Orleans, Louisiana, from Hurricane Katrina. So I myself was going through a lot at the time. And, um, I also met other friends who were in the foster care system, who was going through a lot, um, mental, emotional, physical, sexual abuse at home. Um, and these are kids that are twelve and thirteen years old and there's no resource for them at school. And I can imagine ten years later, what other things that kids must be dealing with and there's no resource for them.
Yeah, uh, thank you for coming in. I, I don't think this is a, um, this is an issue that I think we deal with in the country across the board, uh, uh, mental health. And you're absolutely correct. A lot of folks are very shy and they don't want to express how they're feeling, especially men, uh, per se, and young boys. I definitely believe this is something that we should have i- in our schools. We have a lot of our kids and students who are going through a lot of issues across the board and they don't have any outlet. So to come to school and be there, you know, from eight in the morning until two o'clock, dealing with a lot of these issues and don't really have somewhere to go to deal with that, I think, uh, it's definitely something that, uh, the, the school, the school board needs to, to work on. I just want to quickly touch on, you did mention about the cuts. Uh, just so you understand, we really, as a council, as a body, we cannot tell the schools exactly how to allocate their funds.
Of course.
They come in, we provide whatever increase that the council approves, but then the school board goes back and do what they have to do on their end. So we really don't have a say in that. But this would definitely be something that they should be a part of their, the budget as far as mental health for, to make sure that they have that facility in the schools for the students when needed. So what I would say to you is to find out exactly when is the next Board of Ed meeting and go in and to also express the way you did tonight. And it's definitely something that they need to look into.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, my name's Joe Quinn. I live on forty-nine Gab Road, also known as the Speedway. Um, but I'm here tonight with a request that the Town Council assist me in solving a great mystery. As you look behind you at the town seal, you will notice that there is a drum on our town seal. Revolutionary War drums were built on Brown Street. Uh, and that was one of the few places where revolutionary drums were built. Uh, since the ongoing multi-year renovation of the town green, who knew you had to do the grass twice, uh, but that's another story. Uh, something's been missing. The war memorials are there, but the drummer isn't. I have been to the town manager's office and gotten as far as his gatekeeper, who said, we don't know where it is, go see the town engineer. Went to the town engineer and he said, I'll get back to you. That could be in like a geological period that he was intending. And finally, I had some, a few moments with the assistant engineer. And she said, I'll get back to you. And she did get back to me, which almost called for, you know, CPR. Uh, but she said, it's in Massachusetts somewhere being cleaned. That didn't sound to me like a real confidence builder that we will ever see the drummer here again. In Massachusetts, a state recently gone to legalize marijuana, our drummer statue is in a warehouse somewhere. I hope we get it back. I'm requesting that we establish where it is. And more importantly, when will it be returned to its place? Now, I, I heard that there was some discussion that maybe a committee would be to find the best location. Well, it was in the best location, why didn't you just put it back there? So I'm requesting that the Town Council, uh, contact whomever in Massachusetts who may know where our drummer boy is, find out how the cleaning's going. I hope the cleaning goes faster than the lawn work that we had done. And get it back installed as, as soon as possible. You know, there are very few wedge, single-issue voters in the world these days, just like everybody. But I could see if this rolls into November, I might become a drummer boy, single-issue voter. So I'd like to request that you do whatever is possible to find out where it is, what's the schedule for getting it up.
So, um, the drummer boy is in Massachusetts. He's, uh, not smoking weed, that's been legalized in Massachusetts. He's not being held for ransom, so he will be returning. What we will try to do is get you a specific time that he will be returning. But he's coming home.
He's coming home?
He's coming home.
Is that, I mean, I'm old, I mean, can I expect to?
Well, that's what I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna try to nail that down.
What the schedule for his return is?
Yes, sir. But the drummer boy really i- is a staple of our town. And I believe that we all honor, um, that statue and the meaning of it. Um, and I, we all thought that it would be better for us to make sure that it's repaired and in good condition, especially since we were doing renovations over there. So it was the perfect time to get it taken care of. But we will try to get a exact date and put it on the website when the drummer boy will be returning home. Yes, Counselor Mann.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Queen, that you've been under such anguish all this time about the drummer boy.
When you, when you live with someone who has been in this town longer than probably most of you have been alive and she does not see the drummer boy.
The, uh, the drummer boy needed to be more than cleaned, it had to be repaired as well. It's been sitting out in the weather for, for over twenty years or so. And, uh, and it needed some repairs. Now, the big question coming back, and we do have an idea within a matter of months, is where to put it? Now, you say that it, it, it should go back where it came from. There are other issues because the town undertook the renovation of the green to do other things on the green, like have other performances and would the drummer boy be in the way? So there is going to be a committee formed to decide where exactly it should go. Some feel it should be moved to a place where it gets more prominent visibility and not have people climbing on it if there were a concert going on there on the green. Some people are thinking that town may be getting roundabouts in the, in the area and this could be a very signature thing, right in the middle, uh, first thing you see as you come into town. There's a lot of different things. We appreciate your, your concern and we'll act, look forward to you participating in that, that decision as to where it should go.
I'm on Gab, give me a call.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Good evening, Council and everyone. I'm gonna read because I'm very nervous. My name is Peggy Brown. Um, I live at fifty-one Douglas Street and I've lived in Bloomfield, Connecticut most of my life. Me and my husband are raising our family here and we're proud to establish our family in this town. We are homeowners, taxpayers and voters. I'm coming to this council meeting to make the council aware that my drinking water has been contaminated and that I need the town to support the, the health, health of my family and my community in fixing this problem quickly. About fifteen years ago, an environmental company came to my home to test our well water. Since then, they in Connecticut Deep have tested several times. We did not know that our well would be impacted and since then, we've tried to protect our children and our family by buying bottled water. Because with all of the testing, nothing was done for us. Since then, I've tried to get support for correcting this and it's been hard. When I mentioned the health of my family and the well contamination, the response I get, it's about money. How much is too much to protect people? Are my neighbors and my family not worth protecting from industry? We are not responsible for the contamination, we didn't cause the contamination. We have a small well with no oversight or treatment. We don't know the next, we don't know the extent or when the next occurrence will happen. The town of Bloomfield allowed zoning for the past and existing industrial hazards to be near a community on well water and a community that is black and not wealthy. I believe that because the town has zoned the proximity, proximity to people and risks, our natural resources, that the town should be a part of fixing the problem and fully understand the impact these facilities have made on Bloomfield residents. We know of the well contamination, Deep has a full record of this over ti- over time. But what are the other hazards? Are there other hazards in Bloom, that Bloomfield is willing to accept because it's not in their neighborhood? I hope that this statement ignites the council, the chair, the mayor and the town manager to make this a priority. We live with this daily and we need a solution immediately. I say that to say that I do plan on being on the next Town Council. I find, this is an extremely, extremely important issue to me and I think to my neighbors. I think they are unaware, they're, my neighbors have well water that are behind me and I don't think they've ever been tested or have any knowledge. And I'm very concerned. And I know as you make your budgets that I would definitely like testing to go on for those people who have well water because they're made under, they're made unaware of knowing what's happening to them. And, um, I have children who have lived, we've, we've drank this water, washed in this water, done all this stuff with this water. And it's quite concerning that because the industry has grown, that it won't be the last spill that we have. So I thank the council for their time and listening to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If we could wait a minute, I know that, um, the town manager is aware of the situation, so we will.
Peggy, it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you too, nice to meet you, thank you.
Um, thank you for coming in. Um, we have, uh, begun to reach out to MDC about what would it take to get an extension of municipal served water out to your area? And I, I've got to find out what those costs look like. Um, and I know you wouldn't, TRC is the consultant that was assigned by Deep to go out and do testing, um, to look and see if the spills that happened at the storage facility are actually creating a problem. This is fifty-one Douglas Street? Um, and Peggy was telling me there's a storage facility out there that had some spills. And now the property has changed hands and Deep has a subcontractor called TRC doing some testing. And they're looking to see if there's contamination from this prior property owner. I spoke with Peggy about, uh, the need for her to have her well tested to see if there was any impact on her well. TRC has not shared any results yet. They have been out testing, but they haven't shared any results. She got a letter indicating that they were assigned the task of doing the testing. So once she became aware that there might be a problem, she reached out to us. Um, we're reaching out, uh, to see if, what it would cost to get a water line out that way. I do think that the neighbors, um, probably should have their wells tested out there. Um, and that's something that, you know, we can get in front of the neighborhood through DPW and, and Jose and Codes and interface with them. We don't have a ready answer for an extension of a municipal line. That's not something that, you know, MDC does that. And if we want to see an extension out there and the residents don't have the funding to pay for it, we need to talk. Because that's not something that's part of our, our process at the moment. But it remains to be seen whether she's got contamination, but she's got a family living off that well. And if TRC comes back and says that, you know, there's some, uh, impacts from this spill and it's got to be mitigated by the property owner, the property owner's going to be on the hook for cleaning that up. Um, and I do think that that neighborhood needs to be aware of the issue and they need to be. If it was me, I'd be demanding testing from, uh, the, the people that may have caused the problem, just to clear it.
What, what is this nebulous storage facility? What is it storing?
Um, I, I believe that the activity ceased. I, I believe the property changed hands and I don't know what it was storing and I don't know what the contaminant was. And I haven't talked to Deep yet. Um, we connected, we connected last week.
J and A, yeah.
Joseph Brown.
My husband.
Really laid out very well exactly what has happened there. I just want to fill in a little additional information. The contamination evidently has came from J and A, the previous business that occupied that location. Now, we haven't found whether there was an incident reported to Deep for an environmental spill. Um, that information, if we could help us to, to gain that information, that would, that would help us out. Because to do our water testing, it's very expensive to do water testing. And you have to really know what chemicals you're actually looking for. Because if you do a full T clip on it, a TCLP on the water, the minimum is, is, is fifteen hundred dollars to test it properly. Okay, we don't have that money at this time. And if there was. Yes, and if there was an environmental incident from the previous owner, what accountability did that company have? Because they still are required to do environmental closure before they moved. I know they're, I think they're Bloomfield's number one or number two largest taxpayer. But they would still be required to do environmental closure on that property before they could close everything up. And I don't know if they have monitoring wells that they were forced to put in and to, and those results should be public.
Yeah, um, our, our Health District tested all the houses on Dunkaster Road when it was discovered that many of the wells were contaminated some twenty years ago. And I would, I would wonder if they could do the same with you. I don't know why our Health District wouldn't be the people to take charge of this. And what they can't handle, they usually refer to the state health people. So I, I, I would suggest that we refer it to them first because that, and they've got it. And they, they went, they, they.
There, there are two kind of issues I kind of have with that. Um, first of all, we are taxpayers in the town of Bloomfield. The town of Bloomfield should not be the full responsible, bear the full load of environmentally testing. testing a company in Bloomfield's spill. Is there any accountability that the company will be held to?
So, I think the first thing that we need to do is to try to get the report from Deep to find out what happened. Now, I don't know if the town manager can do it, but I believe the Health Department, the Health District can do it as well. Find out if there was a spill and if there was, what was the contaminants? That's the first thing that needs to happen.
Because this is the second spill on, from that same general area. There was a cleaners in there that was back, I think, about twenty years ago. That was on the other end of the street that had a spill too as well.
So, we need to get some reports, right, to find out exactly what happened. Then we need to try to figure out from the company that came out to do the testing, what they found and what they didn't find. I think if the Health District does go out there and find out that there is some contaminants, of course you'd have to go after the company that was in possession of the property at that time and they would be responsible. So, I think there's a couple of things that actually needs to happen before we can, you know, come up with a remedy or figure out who's responsible or what's going on. So, I'm sure the town manager will start the process on some of those steps.
Yeah, we'll circle the wagons with staff and come up with information for the council as well as Peggy and Joseph.
Okay. Wasn't, so we're a quick question for the town manager. Were you aware of that there was an environmental incident?
Not until Peggy called me to let me know that TRC was involved. The fact that you've got a third party out there doing testing tells me that something may have happened and they're trying to figure out if somebody's liable or not. And it sounded like TRC was gonna share their results, but they haven't shared anything yet.
And just to keep in mind that our town manager has been on the job for how long?
A month. A month.
So, I just wanted to give you that, just, you know, deputy mayor.
Yeah. So, in the interim, how are you managing with drinking water and what are you doing to cope with that?
Right now, we're doing bottled water.
Okay.
Doing bottled water and we're actually, we're planning on doing our own testing, but I wanted to find out either if I have to pull the SDS or MSDS sheets from the previous company that was there because I work for an environmental company and that's my cost, is fifteen hundred dollars to do a T clip on that. To test the water without knowing the chemicals you're actually testing for is very difficult. So, to know what possibly could be contaminants. And we did have testing done. There was testing done for, like my wife had said, fifteen years ago. We don't have the results from those tests.
Wow.
Well, that's...
Okay.
Okay. So, this is something that the town manager will be working on with the Health District and we will definitely keep you up to date as well as the council to see where we go from here.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
I stand with them. I'm his sister Shelby Brown. I live in East Hartford, to Sunset Ridge Drive, but I'm a regular visitor at 51 Douglas Street. And I just wanna punctuate a couple of things. I really appreciate the council's response. There are a couple of things. One is, of course, the finance. They have not begun to tell you all what it has cost them to have this issue at their house. They replace washing machines three times a year. They replace pipes. They replace, am I correct? They replace all these things because of what's happening and this is not a normal water flow condition. No one else has to replace their machinery that frequently. So, we know something is wrong. And the cost of bottled water as well is exorbitant relative to the cost of public water. This family has invested a fortune in just trying to keep their family from consuming additional contaminants. We still don't know what the effect of that is when they bathe in it or what the effect of it is to the other elements of the environment, like what is their dog experiencing? What are their garden, the camp garden, I'm sure? They used to try, but there are all these other factors that add to or take away from quality of life and for this family, that's huge, the financial cost. There's also a real equity issue here. When it comes to this neighborhood, this is not Bloomfield's most affluent neighborhood. This is also a neighborhood where industry has taken over. The residents are diminished because the industry has just taken over. I know there's an important reason to have industry in town for the tax base and all, but for this neighborhood where residents live and children are trying to play and they're trying to have quality of life, there's a real equity issue. And again, awareness. The rest of the neighbors on the other side that are on the backside of Cottage Grove Road may not even know that their wells are contaminated. So, there's a real public role to play. But we're asking you as a town council, please make sure, not only do we wanna make sure our family is safe, but we wanna make sure the other residents of Bloomfield who may be affected, who may have no idea that this is going on, know and that they can do something about it. And also, there's a human rights issue. I mean, we all saw with Flint, Michigan, how horrible it was that people can't drink the water. That is a basic human right, to be able to breathe the air and drink the water. And so, when it comes to, I mean, my passion goes up with this because as people of color, as people who, you know, I know our district, our public health district is shared with West Hartford. I don't know if Bloomfield gets its fair share, proportion of resource out of that public health district, but we need to demand that and we need the town council to stand with us in demanding that we get our fair share. It may be that there might be additional testing that needs to be done. It may be that there might be some cost share that has to happen in order to get public water to these folks whose well has been contaminated. If that's the case, we need to know that the town stands with us and they're gonna stand right there until we get what we need to be able to have a financial balance, equity, and our human rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, we're gonna go into our reports from our subcommittee. I could probably do on a new business. Community Service and Administration and Education, deputy mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report tonight for Community Service Committee. Next meeting will be in December. Admin Education met on October 7th at 6:30. We receive our monthly reports, first from the Human Services Facility. We receive a status update on the project and the budget and we discussed that during the meeting. The building project is in the closeout phase, finalizing invoices and change water requests. There are also a few items that are being addressed, including the accessibility options to the doors, the ADA, for the entrance of the building and for the bathrooms. That's being addressed. Also, the landscaping, irrigation, and other potential items. The project is currently in Phase Two of the process, the project. The demolition is also completed. The soccer fields are all leveled. There was an issue that came up during the conversation with the folks from the Building Committee in regards to fencing. Because what usually happens when the kids are out there playing soccer, prior to this, there was a chain fence per se where it will stop the ball and so on. So, I noticed in the last couple of days, there were fencing around the soccer field. So, I think that problem has been resolved. Also, the final certificate of occupancy is anticipated to be in October. In addition, the subcommittee discussed a status update for potential concerns regarding some aspect of Phase Two of the project such as I mentioned, the fencing. So, but I have to say, this project has come along. The building, to me, it's usable. A lot of folks go there for different activities. The one thing I have to say that has been a little disappointing is parking. There's been an issue with parking there, so hopefully, we can try to address that before the project is complete. I know there's currently three fields. There's two on the right of the building and there's one at the back. But what I've noticed in the last couple of months or so with different activities at the facility, there's a lack of parking also during election time. So, that's definitely something that we have to look into for future uses. Next item is Public Works Facility. The project is currently underway. I think there was some holdup with MDC and I think that has been resolved and they're moving along, hoping to receive a full monthly report at the next meeting. We did not receive one this time around, but there haven't been any holdups with that project. It's moving along. We also did receive a report from Zoning and Blight Enforcement, Mike Casella. That's also a work in progress. There have been a couple glitches per se. Haven't been a really comprehensive approach to how we do things within the town. I know the town manager is working to see exactly what's going on in West Hartford to try to make sure we have the enforcement capabilities here in Bloomfield when it comes to anyone that's not in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Under new business, we did discuss, we had a discussion regarding the audio and technology improvements within the council chambers. Our town manager did bring up a few items that he had noticed at last couple of meetings. Case in point, under oath here, we have the remote control for the television. And if you notice a couple of times, we have Councilman Goff who has been assigned as a technician to help us through our... Exactly. So, we're looking towards better training and it could be over there with India instead of up here and we'll prevent that from happening in the future because when we have presentations and stuff within the council chambers, it's better to be handled over there so we can continue on the town's business. Next item, we did discuss affirmative action report for the first quarter, 2019, 2020. The subcommittee received a detailed report of the current affirmative action plan for 2019, 2020. There were thirteen hires for the first quarter, fiscal year 2019, 2020. Those were basically part-time employees. The town is moving in the right direction in making sure our workforce reflect the town. So, I just wanna say that I am very impressed with what we've done so far in the last two years and we hope to continue with that progress. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Finance Council about...
Yes, Madam Mayor. No report since last time. The Finance Subcommittee has not met. And I will alert the public that it is likely that the Finance Subcommittee will not meet in October. I talked to the Finance Director today. There's really nothing on the agenda. The next major thing we need to do is review the debt status of the town and that will likely be on the agenda for the November Finance Subcommittee meeting. So, it hasn't been officially canceled yet, but please watch the town notices. It is likely to be and we'll see you in November. Thank you.
Committee on Committees and the New Second Committee vote. Make Council Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no report to make on either committee. I think the Committee on Committees is pretty much...
Coming to the end of the two-year period after November, December, all of the committees will be up for resigning. Those who wanna stay on committees can stay. We chance for those others who don't want to remain, get off the committee. So, I am saying this is for everybody out in the audience and at home to think about if they wanna serve on a committee, now's the time to think about that committee and let us know what you're, let us hear from you. We'll be meeting probably at the end of the month, but there are several committees. If you have a question, you can notify me through the Town Mail System or our website. As far as the Men's and Economic Development Committee, I was supposed to meet tonight at TCU because of the holidays, the council meeting. We'll be meeting again, it'll be probably a special meeting, another government meeting.
Thank you. We're gonna go into our council business, but before we do that...
Public Safety.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. Public Safety, Council with clarity.
We have going for a public...
Thank you. You're so quiet, I almost forgot you were there. Before we go into our new business, I'd like a motion to be made to add an item to our executive session. Would you have an executive session tonight? I'd like a motion to add discussion of...
Pending labor.
Pending labor negotiations. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussions?
Is that something we do now or we do that one in the executive session?
Well, I'm doing now to add it to the agenda because it's not on the agenda.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? 19-20-19, considering take action concerning resolution of pending tax appeals, this will be taken up in the executive session. At this time, we'll have a report from our town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief. Today marks about a month and a half on the job. With Phil's help, I've been able to accelerate connections with internal and external parties, agencies, and resources. Since we last met, I've had a conversation with the press largely about furniture as well as other matters and I met with Bill from the Historical Society and Victor from the Wenton Berry Land Trust. I spoke with Sid Schulman and attended a Lions meeting as well as a couple of Rotary meetings. I'll be joining both if they'll have me. I've also held meetings with CROG and, is that how you guys say that? CROG? And the cost representatives about town issues and services for the town. So, I'll be providing reports on places where I see some opportunities for traction. I also met with a fire marshal on some code issues and some of our housing challenges. And I got to celebrate the promotion of Sergeant Thomas with the Police Department and specifically, I'd say again to him, congratulations Sergeant, well done. I was pleased to attend Senator Murphy's visit to the Legion of Services Building and to hear his thoughts about coming challenges in DC. And I enjoyed last Saturday's shred event here at Town Hall. It was nice to see everybody out. I've accepted appointment too and I met with the Health District Board. I had my first meeting last week. I will be gearing into them rather quickly with Peggy and Joseph's problem out on Douglas Street. I've also met with the MDC board members that we have, Al and Byron, to discuss some upcoming challenges that we're gonna face at the MDC with some of the shifts in financing that they're contemplating. I discussed upcoming elections and support of the election process with the registrars and reviewed pending fleet management and software plans at Public Works. We currently operate 324 pieces of rolling stock. For a town our size, that's a little large and we need to get on top of that and manage some of that down. I've also met on progress of the DPW construction project. There's some things I wanna bring to council's attention in the near future. We did meet internally on the surge tank requirement that MDC has placed on the project and I expect ripples from that to come to council. I met with the Administration and Education Committee meeting and I am working with Jose and Mike on enhancing our reporting on code enforcement and blight issues and I do want to talk to the Health District about some help with the housing code. I'll start that conversation after we've internally discussed it and I've interfaced with council. I met with departmental staff to discuss upcoming lease issues related to the town's reservoirs and maintenance thereof. I've also met with staff and golf course personnel to review their upcoming budget perspectives to look and see what that's gonna bring to the budget process. I've reviewed the town's procurement processes with finance and have a leadership meeting to discuss approaches to the upcoming capital budget process and I'll be talking with council about that more as I get feedback from our leadership. I've worked on the collective bargaining agreement negotiations and I've had a few grievance meetings over some complaints. I did miss the CEEC meeting this last week. I would remind the community that it's still mosquito season until the Health District says otherwise, so everyone should take precautions and don't forget that West Nile is still out there. Everybody's thinking about Triple E, but West Nile's still out there. So, everybody should be careful. The Finance Committee will meet on the 21st at 6:30 here at Town Hall. Beautification will meet on the 27th at 7:00 here. The men's breakfast at the Senior Center is on the 25th at 9:15. I'll be meeting some folks there. I'll be meeting with the JCC on the 29th in West Hartford and Habitat for Humanity on the 30th in Windsor. Sometime in all of that, my wife's gonna arrive and she'll get here with the dog and the cat and then the moving van's gonna show up. So, it may be difficult to physically find me, but I will always be in touch because Scott has now tied me to this thing and it goes with me everywhere I go and it rings all the time and I always answer it. So, if you can't find me lingering around near my desk or meeting with people, please do reach out because I will pick it up and answer the phone. Thank you, Mayor.
Point of information. The Beautification Committee meets on Tuesday the 22nd, 27th of December.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so, the town manager talked about the promotion service... Okay, so, the town manager talked about the promotion services that we went to at the police station, but I'd also like to make note that Sergeant Ellen White has officially retired from the police station. However, she's going to be at BVA in the capacity that she was in before. So, we're grateful for not losing that wealth of knowledge. The Minority Construction Council had an amazing event here at our new Human Services Building, which was attended by many, many, over 100, maybe 150 contractors and financing people and things like that, which was really good. People are very impressed by our new Human Services Building, and I think that building is really a feather in the cap of our town. Sharon, do you want to talk about the event that we had with Hartford Foundation? You don't want to? If you can give us a little update on that, please.
We attended the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving at Windsor Library a couple weeks ago. I believe right now, they are looking to work on the selection committee, and there'll be an upcoming meeting. I don't know, Paula, do you have one that meeting?
I don't have one.
It's coming up. Don't have the date, but that's what's next on the agenda for that.
So, this whole process is there's going to be a selection committee, and that selection committee will create a steering committee, I believe it is, for, and it's basically for residents of our town to figure out how to fund projects. There's going to be a grant opportunity for our town, and it's not going to be the elected officials, but it's going to be a community-driven program. So, that's coming down the pike, and we will definitely have more information on that. I think that's it. Can we have the approval of the September 23, 2019 meeting? Is there a second?
Question?
Yes.
Has it been changed? The attendance was changed? Okay. I see. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? September...
One step. I don't think Councilman McClary was here, so he was just, he was, you took it out. Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Okay.
Was that tonight?
That was September 23rd.
I'm glad you did that.
You weren't here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. September 9th, special meeting. Is there a motion?
So move?
So move. Second.
Any comments? Yes.
I read through this, and I, where are the numbers for...
September 9th?
[inaudible]
So, I believe that...
Oh, there it is. Never mind. I see it's in the draft. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Council comments? We'll start with you, Council McClary, since you're on the phone.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Council Merritt?
Yes, I have some concerns, and I thought that on tonight's agenda would be the $20,000 that was included in the town's budget, voted on by this council. And normally, it was unconditional. It was for the, for our BATV. And it's the same $20,000 we gave them last year, and they need that kind of thing to keep going. They rely on contributions. And it's been held up, and nobody's talking about any reason. There's no reason to hold something up that's been voted on. There was no conditions on it. It was just something we should spend, just like we give the Bureau of Education their money. This always happens at the beginning of the year after the new budget starts. And so, this has been, it's very difficult for them. They need the money, and there's no conditions on it, and it was something voted on as the town council. And secondly, I'm also concerned that there's going to be a, everybody knows that the Bureau of Education's in trouble because they have a $3.5 million that they lost, that they have, that they did have last year and don't have this year. So, nothing was, was supposed to be a special meeting to deal with that. That isn't happening. I haven't heard it being scheduled. So, we have underfunded them this year, so it's, I don't hear any talk about this. This isn't something that people want to deal with. So, I'm concerned about these things. Thank you.
Council Goff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of comments, maybe a little less serious than a serious one. First of all, I thought, I think it was great we recognized the two golf leagues. I would suggest next time, if we do recognize the women's league, maybe we'd get a quote from Babe DiDruckson instead of Ben Hogan. The other thing to Mr. Quinn, the person who's very concerned about the whereabouts of the drummer, I think there was a serious side to this in the sense that I'm a little, what I was most concerned about hearing was that he couldn't get an answer to this, and I think that speaks again to the communication issue. Everyone up here at the DS, I think, was surprised because we know what's happening to the drummer, and I think that has been conveyed very well to the, to, to at least some folks, but obviously not to the general public, and I do apologize for that. We need to do a better job of getting that out. In the meantime, though, so that we can maybe allay people's fears, I know that there, people do things with like little gnome statuary, where they show pictures of their gnome at the North Pole or at, you know, traveling around in China or whatever. So, maybe what we could do is just start a, where is, where's the drummer boy today? You know, or this week? This week, the drummer boy is in Russia, and this week, you know, whatever. The other thing, though, I've got to say, and I mean, we are starting, we are starting to report, we have sown, I think, with the quote "development" on certain corridors of the town and the industrial development we heard about with the potential pollution of folks drinking water. As was mentioned, we talked about Flint, Michigan. This is happening around the country, and this is something, this is obviously something that a lot of the folks in town are concerned about, you know, happening on a larger scale as our resources, particularly our water, are taken over from being public amenities and basic human rights to being the, under control of various corporations. And the fact that we locate the industrial corridors in some areas of town and not in others, we're hearing this of truck traffic all the time. So, I think it's very important that, I'm very, I'm very happy with these citizens coming before us. I think we need, obviously, we don't know the facts yet, but I'm very pleased with the town manager getting on top of this. We need to know what's going on and why there would be industrial spills and the public potentially not know about it. That's a very scary, scary thing. So, I'm happy, I'm happy that it's in process, obviously not happy to hear about this. We read every day about the PFAS stuff in the paper. That's, you know, that's, there are all sorts of scary things about this happening out there. So, thank you.
Council Mayor?
Well, I have very little to offer tonight. I just want to say hello to my fellow Bloomfield residents and ask you to walk out and around your town and see how beautiful it is this time of year. The trees are spectacular. It's a great fall, and the town has planted flowers and things around. Take a walk, enjoy your town. It's very exciting. I wanted also mention, because I think the manager brought up the meeting with Chris Murphy, our state senator, our national senator, at the Human Services Building. It was quite an event. I mean, it filled the room. It brought some attention to our town that hadn't happened in quite a while because this is a senator. He could have gone to many places in the district, and we got him to come to Bloomfield. So, we had people from other towns coming to our town, which is always a good thing. And I think the discussion was insightful, and people got a chance to not only meet him, but understand his position on things, and I think that was a wonderful thing for our town. So, I think there are good things going on in the town, more so than, I hope, than in the past, but just get out and take a walk around. It's very pretty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to piggyback on something that Councilman Goff just addressed in regards to the environmental issues, because I've been thinking about this a couple weeks now. And usually what I see is, in the less affluent neighborhoods, people tend to believe you could do whatever, right? And it's all about quality of life, because a lot of things that our young people, a lot of these young kids are diagnosed with could lead to a lot of these issues right back. The quality of the water they're drinking, the environment they're in. So, I believe that, what I would say to my colleagues, especially the folks who are very passionate about the environmental issues and stuff, we definitely need to find a way how we can connect the bots in a less threatening way, per se, because most people think that, oh, these folks are just, no, they're actually doing us a good thing, because I believe that a lot of our health issues could lead right back to quality of life. And I would like us to, a town to be more focused in that. I think there definitely needs to be a balance. We want economic development, but we have to make sure that we're not sacrificing economic development and then we're giving away our health. That's important. We can't get that back. So, I definitely agree with that, and we need to make sure that we're very conscious of what we're doing and protecting not only our planet, but our neighborhood. So, definitely, that should be initiative for this council in 2020, per se, because I think, you know, definitely, it's out there, it's a buzz, people are talking about it. I have my kids that talk about the environment and their quality of life. From a lot of kids in school, they're discussing this, and I think we need to find a way how to educate our kids even more and have them be more involved in making sure that we preserve our neighborhoods and so on. I just want to say, share with you, I did run in the Hartford Marathon this weekend. I didn't do the full or the half. I did the 5K, and to everyone, a 5K is not easy, 3.1 mile. I made it in 33 minutes, and I have to say, I look forward to doing the Turkey Day run in Manchester, so everyone is welcome to come out and run that race. It's 4.7 miles. So, have a wonderful evening, and I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Turkey Day race?
Yeah.
No.
Manchester Road Race. That's a...
So, I do want to thank everyone for coming out and participating and for staying. One of the things that was said tonight, and I'm so glad that the town manager has really hit the ground running. I know that he has just piled it all up on his plate, and he's taking it one bite at a time, but I'm grateful for that and for the fact that he is now sitting on the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District Board. I am sure that we will get them more involved into the affairs of Bloomfield and making sure that our town is healthy and whole. The issues that concerns the residents of the town concerns us as counselors. It concerns the Health District, and it concerns the town manager. So, we are not asleep at the wheel. We are not, your concerns are not falling on deaf ears. We will definitely follow up and get back to you. And if we have to write letters to the residents on Douglas Street, if we have to go out and meet with the residents on Douglas Street, I believe we'll do that just to make sure that everyone is informed, that everyone is informed, and that everyone is healthy and whole. I also want to just make mention again of this vaping, vaping issue. There is more students, young people dying because of this issue, and parents, I'm just asking us to be more aware, be alert. Sometimes it looks like a little thumb drive. Sometimes it looks like a little lighter. They're, they're, they're finding ways to get these things into the hands of our children, even though the law has passed that they have to be 21 and older. I know when I was younger, I'm still young, but when I was younger, if you wanted to do something, you found a way to do it. We just have to be vigilant with our children and our students, and we just have to speak to them and be honest and upfront with them. Bloomfield really is a special place, and every time I get the opportunity to say so, I do say that Bloomfield is the best town in the state of Connecticut. And I really do believe that, and I believe that we're the best town because we are so diverse, and it's those things that make us better when we come together and we're able to celebrate that diversity. So, once again, thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for watching on TV, and just keep blooming, right? Keep blooming here in Bloomfield. At this time, we're going to go into executive session, where we're going to talk about pending claims and litigations. Also, we're going to talk about the employment negotiations. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, the town manager, the assistant to the town manager, and our town attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.